This conference will now be recorded.
Welcome all of our guests. Vocal?
Commissioner Jennings?
Here.
Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Commissioner Smollett?
Here.
Commissioner Warren?
Here.
Mayor Gainer?
Here.
And we want to do the opening prayer and pledge of allegiance. Our youth are not here, so the pledge will be done by Commissioner Jennings. I mean, the invocation.
Trade with me, please. He whose heart is kind beyond all measure gives unto each day what he deems best. Lovingly, it's share pain and pleasure mingling tall with peace and rest. God, we thank you for our liberties, that our rights of liberty, life, and the pursuit of happiness. We ask that you would let your presence be here and to guide us through a civil meeting and with wisdom and prudence and deliberation in the matters that come before us. Guide us to act in the better interest of the population of this community and to bless us in this community with peace and harmony. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Absolvent allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. We have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
There's none.
Hearing done?
I make a motion we approve the agenda as written.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as written. All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Recognition of visitors. Introduction and swearing in of new police officer, Lucas Lyons.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I have the honor of introducing a brand new police officer to you this evening. Lucas Lyons began employment with the Kansas City Police Department on February 7th, 2022. Lucas successfully completed all phases of the hiring process to include interview boards, intensive background investigation, polygraph test, psychological and online personality tests, physical capacity test, drug and alcohol screening, and medical. Officer Lyons served as a corrections officer at the Winfield Correctional Facility since 2016 before accepting the position as police officer with us. Officer Lyons has resided in our Kansas City since 2009. When asked during the interview process what he believes is the most critical attribute a police officer needs to be successful today, he responded trustworthiness. Officers must work to build trust and rapport by following through on what they promised to do. We wholeheartedly welcome Lucas and his family into our family at the Ark City Police Department. At this time, I would like to ask the city clerk to administer the oath of honor to Officer Lyons.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. On my honor.
On my honor.
I will never betray my badge.
I will never betray my badge.
My integrity.
My integrity.
My character.
My character.
For the public trust.
For the public trust.
I will always have the courage.
I will always have the courage.
To hold myself and others.
To hold myself and others.
Accountable for our actions.
Accountable for our actions.
I will always uphold the Constitution of the United States.
I will always uphold the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Kansas.
And of the state of Kansas.
My community.
My community.
And the agency I serve.
And the agency I serve.
Congratulations and welcome.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you, sir.
Chief, are we getting pretty well pulled now or?
Almost. I'm gonna go.
Okay, good deal.
Congratulations.
Congrats.
Thank you very much.
They all left. Okay. Comments from the audience not for items on the agenda. Bob Matthews? Nope.
I'm just people down. On rezoning.
Gotcha. Okay. Down to the consent agenda.
I make a motion we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? All in favor with approving, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Old business.
Consider a second reading of an ordinance authorizing the rezoning of 600 South B Street from P Public Use District to C1 Office and Service Business District.
That's who you wanted to speak?
Mayor, sitting here for the Commissioners. This, I know, has come up before you three times now.
Twice.
And I have yet to see anybody from the community of County Health Department come to the Commission and ask for this rezoning. It's always been through city staff. Do they not have the courage to come in and answer the questions that you might? Have you seen a financial statement yet? The City County Health, excuse me, the Community Health. I put it up on Facebook and I think it was 2019, I saw a $23 million deficit on their financial statement. Have you discussed how much it's going to cost to remodel this? That old school building is probably 10 times as big as our Community Health Department offices at home. Within the tag. Why do we want to go in direct competition with ourselves? We have a City County Health Department that the city supports. We have a hospital that the city is supports. Why do we want to support this and let it come in competition? Has anybody ever said, what's going to happen to that building if the Community Health Department doesn't make a go of it? Where do they get their funding? You know, if they're going to give away completely free services, they've got to have income coming from somewhere. Where's that income coming from? I don't, as a citizen, think that I have seen enough information published or on Facebook to make an honest decision on this item. You know, what's going to happen to it if this business fails? You know, we know that all of this money supposedly is coming from taxpayers. Aren't we taxpayers already paying enough money? This likes for you to take that into consideration because I personally, if I was sitting back there, would have appreciated if somebody on that board or Mr. Brizely itself would have came in and asked. I don't believe it's our city staff to promote this rezoning without input personally from one of the board members or. Thank you, here.
Thank you, sir.
I probably should clarify that this isn't a city staff pushed item. It would be the property owner requesting rezoning, which at this point would be, you know, the school USD 470 would be requesting a rezon. So.
I just have one particular question for the school district. Is there a reason that this property was not put up for commercial purchase? That it went privately without anyone knowing it was up for sale?
Not particularly, other than the preference of the board that because that building was committed to public purpose when it was built and it served that particular purpose census inception that it would stay in public use and public service.
Okay. Commissioners, anyone else have any questions?
Well, I might say this, that I got, talked to some attorneys and stuff about this, and this is a zoning issue. And that it, you know, to stop this zoning thing is, there's 12 things when you go through a zoning thing, and nothing says that it can't be done. I mean, in other words, I mean, it's one of those things that, well, I don't think we can stop the zoning issue part of it, you know? I mean, if we do, what, they're going to take us court and district court, and then we're going to win it, you know? I mean, so, I mean, it's just, all we're doing is the zoning part of it. I mean, I agree with Bob Matthews on some of the stuff he said, but it goes back to the zoning. I mean, we can't pick and choose, I don't think, you know, who comes in, who comes out on the zoning part of it, you know? It's our responsibility, but I wish Larry was here to say something, but he's not, so.
The record reflects that on Tuesday, January 11th of this year, that we have received a recommendation, or at least they voted to send a recommendation to the governing body that we approve the ordinance. I think there is, I can't get the number exactly right, but there are like about eight to 10 different criterion that the planning commission, when conjunction with staff, is supposed to take into consideration.
I think it's 12.
The 12.
Yeah. That's what I was trying to say, 12.
The impact of rezoning this and where we are is that towns like the school has no further interest in the property. They would be a public use entity. The municipal government has not expressed an interest in the property. They would be a public use. The community college would be taxing jurisdiction that would justify a public use. And the county itself, the bridge givers are public entities, and none of these taxing jurisdictions have articulated an interest in maintaining it for any public purpose, I think. And that's all the discussion that would have, all the discussion that would have been held in the planning commission meeting. And, yeah, if we are, due diligence is to, if we contest one of those criterion, we could send this back to the planning commission, but I don't know that we have grievance against any of the criterion used or the recommendation to do so. Might have been good to know who the one who has, who dissented, the one dissenting vote, what their concern might have been. But I think, well, not I think, our, we're kind of guided by those criterion statutorily, as Commissioner Warren has said, to act on the recommendation of the planning commission or to give a rationalization why we would not do so. I don't know if we need to hear the, I don't know if we need to hear again the components of the decision, the guiding principles of the decision, but.
Josh, you want to go over some of the criteria, you remember some of the criteria?
Thank you. I was, I didn't want to call them.
I will. Because, I mean, I had attorney look at them, and they didn't follow it, you know?
These, these criteria, they're in the staff report that's in your packet. They follow what is called the golden rules. And that's from a Supreme Court case, I forget exactly what, the City Overland Park versus. And they had a few in that case. Yes, I don't know, honestly, I don't have been told, tired of that case. But basically, what came out of that case was these factors that we're supposed to consider every time we do a rezoning. So it's asking stuff like, what's the neighborhood look like? Is, is the restriction suitable for the area? Is the new proposed use, is that compatible with the area? So the kind of things we look at, and then we look at some other stuff like, will it affect the community facilities like utilities? Can the support, we look at the comprehensive plan, whether or not it meets what the comprehensive plan says. Oh, another one was how long the property's been vacant. Just one of them. See if I'm missing. Oh, the one about other land in the. And then the most important question probably on there at all is that number 11 about public health safety, general for if the proposed use is going to violate any of those things, I would argue as staff person that it's probably should not be recommended. Just, just on that alone. And that 12th one is anything else that happens to come up at the meeting when they have a public hearing. The only thing that actually came up, and this report's written before the public hearing, and there was some concerns about parking, but at the meeting, the applicant or the health center stated that it was probably going to be okay if they had an apartment, I think, saying some of these other considerations. From another microphone, please.
Madam Mayor, I do, I do have towards the, towards the question, but aside from addressing the issue of, this will be for, I believe that's a superintendent of schools back there or his business agent. With the comments that were made, I am question, my question is, does the district, sorry, I'm going to put it in a context. What was the school out there in Sleet Edition? Was that the Sleet School? That was there and just stayed in a continuing state of decay for probably a few decades?
Sure.
And, and that would be the, that would be the question. Does the, does the district in this transaction have a protocol for due diligence to say that that property is not going to be transferred or sold into the hands of someone that doesn't have the resource to maintain it such that it becomes another blight or public hazard? Do we, do we, in your transaction, that's your business, but in your transaction, could you speak to whether or not you know that this entity might be able to maintain the property? Is that part of your cell protocol? I mean.
The board was very careful in choosing a business partner that not only would meet the public service point that I mentioned earlier, but also had a demonstrated record of dependability in another community or in other efforts and has been careful enough over the preceding three years to wait for federal grants and funding to come to that group to assure that they would have money not only for the exchange with the school district, but also to upgrade the facility. And they have done that type of a similar transaction in Winfield a number of years ago that has served that community reasonably well, has a sound reputation, and as the board did its full discussion and exchange of that several years ago, they were satisfied that those points had been made. Candidly, we didn't anticipate that there would be that much of a concern regarding this particular building in as much as there was not interest, did not appear to be any other interest in the community. What the board's greatest concern was, it's very similar to what you had described, sir, is that we would end up with the building deteriorating over a number of years and becoming a burden not only to the school district, but to the community as a whole. And it isn't a very common area for people not only coming into the community, but people moving from home neighborhoods to work, shop, to do business. We didn't want that type of deterioration to take place. And there certainly wasn't a feel on the part of the board to have a partner who would use this for the public good and maintain it over the years and had demonstrated the capacity to do that at another location.
Okay. Have any questions? Well, the few people that got ahold of me did so and said they didn't know the property was available. Had they known, they may have developed some interest in it. And so I think as we try and grow here in our community, our tax base on the property tax, we are always looking for it to be placed up in that potential. But I understand what you said when you said your board chose to keep it in public use. Any further discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I mean, we consider a second reading of an ordinance authorizing the rezoning of 600 South B Street from B Public Use District to C1 Office and Service Business District.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? What?
So your motion is to approve the.
Planning commission recommendation.
Doesn't say that.
Right here. That's what you read?
Yep.
Oh.
The rezoning.
If you approve the rezoning.
Right, to approve the rezoning. Okay, I just, okay, I didn't, I didn't hear, I didn't hear her say, I thought you said the reading.
Rather than the.
Okay, authorized. Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second. Vocal?
Commissioner Jennings?
Am I supposed to say yes or aye? Yeah, aye.
Commissioner Rogers?
Um, yes.
Commissioner Smollett?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Mayor Gainer?
Yes.
New business.
Consider a resolution authorizing the city to approve a bid to construct the North Summit Street Resurfacing Project.
Fellow Commissioner, Rosemary Saunders from Ransom Financial Group, were the grant administrators on this project. The city received sealed bids last Thursday for the construction of Summit Street, which is part of the CDBG grant that the city was awarded last year. The city had two bids that were received. Pearson Construction of Wichita was the low bid at $711,981. That is within the budget of the project. And so the city's consideration tonight is to approve a construction contract to Pearson for the work on Summit Street that was designed by Smith &amp; Evans.
Any Commissioners have any questions?
And we're saving what, about $200,000 or, Andrew, or? The bid came in less than what we anticipated, yeah.
About $200,000 less.
I think we need to commend the city staff and the city for working on grants and trying to get this cost down for the cities and the taxpayers. I haven't paid $900,000 out of pocket to roughly, what, $230,000 approximately? I mean, we saved a lot of money with these grants. I know the city staff worked a long time on this, so. Let's say this, thank you for that, for the help.
Just as a reminder for those that are not aware, the city was awarded the KDOT cost share for $227,500 for this project. This will be the first CDBG slash KDOT cost share joint project.
Is that right?
Thank you.
Wow. That's unbelievable.
Thank you too.
Yeah, thank you.
For what you do and how diligent you are in helping us secure funds.
I wouldn't be able to do it without the city staff and their support.
Well, I would like to make a motion that we consider a resolution authorizing the city of Ark Kansas City to approve a bid submitted by Pearson Construction to construct the North Summit Street Resurfacing Project for an amount not to exceed $711,981. Second that.
Okay, only one of you gets credit.
Oh, go ahead. You already said it.
And this will also take care of the east turn there by radio lane, right?
Yeah, it encompasses radio lane and the portion.
Intersection.
Yeah, intersection that's been so.
And our sidewalks on the east side, just red. We have solid sidewalks on the east side all the way up through. Other sidewalks and some curb work.
All right, we have a motion and a second repeatedly for this bid by Pearson Construction. Any further discussion by Commission? Hearing none? All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. City Manager?
The City Hall and City Offices will be closed on Monday, February 21st for President's Day. There will be no recycling at Stroud Field on the 19th, Saturday, the 19th. There will be a coma for elected officials training, so the Kansas Open Meetings Act training. That'll be virtual through the League of Municipalities. That'll be on Wednesday, February 23rd. So it's really good training for the new electeds and even the ones that have been around a while too, just a good reminder on Open Meetings Act. And then the next city, the committee study session will be February 23rd. Be in my office. We got to go to Topeka this week. I know we talked a little bit about it, but the city was awarded another CBDG grant, and this is for housing renovation. It is a $300,000 grant that will provide $25,000 grants for approximately 12 homes in a selected neighborhood. It'll do things like roofs, siding, windows. It could do electrical, plumbing, anything like that that's to help make the house a good solid house for the, you know, another 20, 25 years. The, we have free applications to help with the grants. We kind of already have some ideas on people that would be interested in those neighborhoods, and we'll be taking applications. SCAD is our grant administrator for this grant. They'll be doing the inspections of the homes, the, the, they'll go through the applications of the applicants and make sure that they meet all the requirements. They also, during the inspections, they are the ones that help decide what gets done for the homes. It's not, you know, I don't like the carpet anymore. It's more about safety and structural things to make the houses better, so.
The home is based kind of to follow SCAD's guidelines and rules.
Right, now, if they, if the, if they get new siding orders or anything like that, but it's not based on, hey, this is just out of style now. It's more about the condition.
Function.
Yeah, functionality of it, so. Anyway, it's a really good program to help a targeted neighborhood, you know, kind of improve and come up in standards, and that's why they kind of, we do target neighborhoods is so that we don't have a house over here and one over here. We're doing a more compact area, and it really helps improve that neighborhood and improve the quality of the homes in that area, so.
How are the people in the neighborhood being alerted that this is out there?
Direct contact. During the application process, staff reached out to them and with letters and things, and then we had a meeting, a pre, kind of a pre-application meeting where there was explained to them more. They had a pretty good turnout, and we'll keep that effort going. They had a pretty good turnout, and we'll keep that effort going. And as far as also local contractors in this program, they have to be certified to do a lot of the work. They have to have lead, paint certifications and some other things, so. At some point here in the near future, we'll have a a meeting with the local contractors, let them know what what certifications and what they need to do to be part of this program and give them the opportunity to bid on these projects as well, so.
Yeah, but what happens if if all that money's not, how long does it take, use that money up? Say if we don't have enough interest for $300,000, then what happens?
Oh, it will, it'll, we'll get it done, but we usually it'll take about a year and a half to get through it because it is a timely process. By the time you apply for, get the inspection.
No deadlines on it?
No, I mean, at some point, but no, it is until it's gone.
Okay.
So, but I would say we'll have it. We'll have it done with a year and a half or so. What I found in previous city was there's always that skepticism of there's no such thing as free. We're always told that. In this case, there is. And and once people start seeing it happen and and hear, you know, then the the interest really starts really rising then, so. Then a couple of things. I'll be gone tomorrow and Thursday. You have, we have the Capitol for KMU, the municipal utilities day at the Capitol. And then the 22nd, Josh and I will be going to the CBDG workshop in Eureka. That's kind of the requirement for this the CBDG grants is that we attend a workshop and learn about all the processes of using the grant. And then on the 28th, there'll be the wastewater treatment plant, creek, construction meeting, and that'll be at 10 a.m. at the water plant. And that's where I really start with, you know, getting with the contractors that'll be involved in the project and just kind of working through the logistics of getting started there on the construction piece of it, so.
When are they supposed to be starting? Here in February or March?
I thought they'd be getting started in March.
Okay, so are we still on schedule? I mean, we were, I mean, we had a time schedule, you know, to start to finish. Are we still on that time schedule or not?
Pretty close.
Okay.
I have it real close to your by schedule, I said. We're not too far off.
Okay. That's all I have. And they pretty well got all the materials locked down on prices and stuff right now, or?
Well, the war occurred pretty well, but I think under a couple items after.
Yeah, I, the meeting Thursday, I was, was, I was in Topeka, so, but yeah, no, I, but I haven't heard the final on that.
I think they're pretty well all better.
Okay, so we won't have any, well, the point I'm getting at is we won't have big surprises, you know?
Not a lot of sticker shock.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, all right. That's, that's the point I'm trying to get at. Yeah.
So do we have communications and reports?
What's in the packet? Okay.
Chief?
Good evening again. So one thing to add to activities this week on Thursday from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. out at Pizza Ranch, the police department is working with Pizza Ranch to do a fundraiser for Elijah Longoria. He is an Ark City High School freshman who is battling cancer right now, and he has a fund set up at Community National Bank. But we, we decided that we wanted to identify a need, and there is definitely one there. So I would invite the commission to come out from 4:00 to 8:00 on Thursday. We get about 10% of all sales from that night, so whether it's delivery, carryout, or dine-in. But we also get all tips and donations from that night to go toward that fund.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything additional from the commission? Somebody say it.
I make a motion we adjourn.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify with aye. We are adjourned.